Buenos, and Hafa Day, everyone. Good afternoon. This virtual public hearing by the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, Guam Build Up, Hagatni Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Library, Telecommunications, and Technology is hereby called to order. Today is Wednesday, January 12, 2022, and the time now is 4:01 PM. For the record, in accordance with open government law, notices for this hearing were sent on January 5, 2022, and again on January 10, 2022. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the Guam Legislature's website. I'd like to thank Senator Joanne Brown for joining me this afternoon. Hafa Day, this is Mossi. Before we begin, I'd like to first provide some general rules of conduct for this hearing for all those in attendance. All must abide by the rules of conduct and quality assurance standards. Please keep your video on at all times and ensure that you're in a room with little to no interruptions and adequate lighting so that we can see your face. When speaking, please ensure that you are unmuted and you are speaking into your microphone. The chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify to begin speaking, and individuals testifying shall be recognized by the chair and state their full name for record purposes. Then we will have questions from the senators who are present, and each member here today will be allowed to pose questions to those testifying. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this general rule of conduct will result in a removal from the meeting room. Today, we have on the agenda the appointment of Non-William Lee, Member Business Representative of the Board of Directors of the Guam Public Library System, and the appointment of Robert C. Titanow, Member Civil Service Commission. Hafa Day, and welcome to everyone who is joining us on the Zoom. I'd also like to welcome my colleague, Senator Telo Titikwe. Thank you for joining us. We'll begin with the first item on the agenda, and that is the appointment of Non-William Lee, Member Business Representative of the Board of Directors for the Guam Public Library System. At this time, I'd like to invite individuals who have signed up to testify for Mr. Lee's confirmation to provide their testimony, and then we will move to the nominee. So we have signed up today the Director of the Guam Public Library System, Chris Siringgon. Hafa Day, sir, if you can. Please state your name for the record and then begin your testimony.
Yes, my name is Chris Sirangan. I'm the Director of Guam Public Library System. I'm here to testify on behalf of Mr. Lin, who is going to be one of our board members representing the business community. And do you want me to continue?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, this is not the best time for Mr. Lin to join our board, and he has been a member last three years, and he has done a wonderful job attending the meetings and contributing on behalf of the community, and I highly recommend that, recommend him to be the member of our board. And I also want to commend him for the dedication that he has showed towards the board, to the members of this community, and he has given, brought concerns and recommendations, suggestions, and so forth to the board, and I look forward to working with him in these coming three years.
Thank you very much, Director Sirigan, for your testimony today. I'd like to also state for the record that we have received testimony in support of Mr. Lee's nomination from June M. Afflecki, Administrative Assistant of the Guam Public Libraries System. So thank you very much. We have some other individuals who are signing on now. If you are here to testify for Mr. Lee, please let me know in the chat. Okay, I think you're here for the second agenda item, so we'll move on to Mr. Lee, the appointee. Please state your name for the record and then begin your testimony.
Honorable Senator Amanda, Senator Joanna, Senator Telo. It's my, my name's William Nan Lee. I'm a past director, past board member of Guam Public Library System, and this is my reappointed appointment, and this is my, first of all, is my great honor to be reappointed and renominated by Governor Lou Liangwol and also by the Board of Guam Public Library System. First of all, I want to reintroduce myself a little bit, so for you to, you know, learn more about me. I'm an only children raised by my mother, Shulang Guan, my father, Zhihui Li. My family immigrate to Guam when I was in high school. English was my, was very limited, but I have a hope to pursuing American dream for a brighter future. So I began my college education at University of Guam in 2002, and I graduated with a bachelor degree in accounting. During my college year, I tackled down my long reach barrier and cultural difference by attending the college, and I also joined ROTC program and become an active members in Junior Accounting Society. I was also interned at the intern at the Deloitte during my senior year, and that was just beginning of my dream. After I graduate, I finally settled my goal and gave back and dedicated myself back to our island through education. I started my career as a Business Development Officer at the Bank of Guam in 2009. Then, you know, I've been interact with a client on a daily basis to provide assistance, and I advise appropriate commercial individual banking services to meet their goal. And then my customer demographic range from restaurant, retail owner, to contractor, to investor. And at the, at each interaction, I strive to achieve exceptional customer service satisfaction while also build a long-lasting relationship with them. In 2018, I was promoted to my first managerial role to the current position as Assistant Vice President and Branch Manager of the Bank of Guam and Anderson Air Force Base. And during past several years at the Anderson Air Force Base, and I served both local and military community in their financial outreach and promote financial literacy through programs such as Niti, Nita Fund Bracita, and also award sponsorship such as Guam International Marathon, Guam Football Association. And through those programs, I collaborate closely with the local mayors and integrate an opportunity to access and extend the financial consulting to residents. Throughout volunteer at Bank of Guam, I also work with youth at a school to setting education and courage safe financial practice. I was awarded in title of U.S. Small Business Administration Minority Champion for Guam. That was also back to, that was back to 2016. Currently, I'm taking active role in local community. I'm served as Member of Director and a Charter of Chinese Chamber of Guam since 2011, and also a member of, a member of Directors in United Chinese Association for 2013. Again, this might, I've been so proud to serve Board Director at the Guam Public Library for past years, and I know during this pandemic, we facing a lot of difficulties, but we continue, you know, a meeting in Zoom to bring out the issue with Guam Public Library, and my goal in the past year is to give a good advice and bring concern from the business community and also to adding ideas into our library and the tighter relationship between Guam Public Library and all throughout the business community. So during this pandemic year, we see a lot of difficulty, and however, I continue actively attend all the meetings and bring ideas and improve our condition and of our current library, but I do truly appreciate our current Director, Mr. Chris, he, you know, since he joined to the library and he actually make a lot of progress and improvement for library, I want to make sure I'll continue work with the rest of the board member and also work closely with our Director to, you know, to improve the condition and improve the involvement between Guam Public Library and our local communities, especially with business communities. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee, for that testimony and for your willingness to continue to serve in this capacity. I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues if they have any questions for you or for the Director of the Public Library System who is here today. Senator Joanne Brown, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I also concur with you in, you know, extending our appreciation to Mr. Lee and wanting to continue to serve on, on the Guam Public Library Board, and I just wanted to get his feedback. I'm happy to hear you have a director for your library now. Is he now the permanent library director? Because I know we went for quite some time without having consistent leadership there, so I just wanted to get his perspective with regards to that.
Definitely, here, I want to send my commitment that, you know, it's my great pleasure, you know, I enjoy the relationship, and it's my personal commitment to the Guam Public Library, and I always consider this is one way for myself to, you know, give back to our community and also public library being very, you know, very, very, it's very great for resources for our local community, and then, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, my commitment to continue serve our community through, through Guam Public Library. Thank you.
And with regards to your director now, so you have a permanent director now who's been appointed? Because for some time, there was a void with regards to the consistent leadership of the Were you able to get my question?
Okay, I'm sorry. Again, I was.
No, no, yeah, I was directing it to Mr. Lee, but go ahead, sir, please.
Go ahead, go ahead. I would like to hear from him. Sorry about that.
No, no, no problem. Do you need me to ask a question again? Either one of you, I think we just want to, we just want to, you know, publicly get an understanding now with regards to your position, because certainly there's been such a void for quite some time in getting a permanent director for the library. So certainly if you or Mr. Lee can respond, either one, I think, just to give us a clearer picture of, of the leadership there at the library system right now, our public library system.
Go ahead, go ahead to Mr. Chris.
Yes, thank you. You know, it is not an easy task after 16 years not having a permanent qualified library director. It was difficult task, and I've been doing a lot of groundwork last six months. For one example, I can inform you that we had a system, you know, library automation system, and it was not fully functional, especially the, the search margin. So our public was having a difficult time finding information using that particular source. So one of the things that I did was I changed the system and something that is applicable to our community. So with a much, much less price, and our staff members enjoy using it, and the patrons are using it. And now slowly, today, yesterday, we opened the Berigada Library after two years, and then we will be opening our public library in Dedito for five days, Monday through Friday, and that is a progress. And all the other branch libraries, we are opening two days a week, and our staff here at the public library is excited, and they want to serve the community. So we are slowly, surely, we are doing some progress, and, and we have also that we were planning to get our e-books. You know, today, this morning, one of the radio shows that I was listening, they were looking for a book written by somebody from Guam, and they wanted that book so bad. And they were talking about all the other resources where they can get the book, but did not mention about our public library. And the way that we are working, we should be able to get that kind of book in, in five minutes. We should be able to get that ebook posted on our website, and the patrons can have it in five minutes. Not only the ebook, also the audiobooks. So we are going towards that kind of, you know, improvement, and we also planning to get some new books, you know, which we have not ordered for a long time, and very small amount, you know, we have six branch libraries, and, you know, if you divide it by, say, 15,000, only $2,000, which is not much for this kind of library. So we are working on that, and also we are also in the process of securing 70-ton air conditioner for our main library here in Hagatni, and all the other libraries also. We are doing a lot of progress, and it's not going to be overnight. Maybe in about six nights, six months' time, our library will be a transformed 21st century library, and through which we wanted to serve our community.
Well, I certainly appreciate your input with regards to that. I didn't realize it has been that long, because goodness, 16 years. I do know there's some, some required qualifications for the director of the library to have, and I look forward to that expansion. I hope that, you know, with our finances, that we put a little more investment in our library system, because you're right, I see like some of the southern library down in Aggett, it seems to only open for a short period of time, and there's a need for members of the community, might be other elderly, definitely for our children, even though, you know, a lot of us get all our information off the internet these days. Sometimes being in that environment and having a little tangible book in front of, you know, a lot of, I still prefer to read that way, and I hope we can have more support within the community and a good and safe, healthy environment for our children to also be in and be engaged in. So I thank you for the, Mr. Director, for your, your input. My last question to Mr. Lee in continuing, and I do appreciate the fact that you desire to continue to serve in your capacity on the board. What do you, what further direction do you want to see? What, what, under your stewardship and your leadership on the board, do you want to contribute further in this upcoming term that you will have up until 2024? I just wanted to get your, your input. What, what, what's your vision? Where would you like to go from here?
Actually, thank you, Senator Joanna. Thank you for the question. Definitely, I just want to, you know, I just want to explain to you, especially myself, along with all other directors, we have so, we are so energetic, we have a lot of good idea, but a lot of thing we cannot, there are so many things we could achieve, but however, during the pandemic, we see the difficulties, and we trying to bring more involvement with the business community. And at the beginning of the time, before the pandemic, we, we actually make, we're trying to make it to effect, we're trying to bring this to, to the picture. However, the pandemic really slowed us down. So my very big things, you know, we see slowly our island community been opening up, and we'll see our tourists come back in. So we want to sure, like, all, you know, we want to bring more involved with, with the business community, things like, you know, utilize our, you know, library as a resource and do all kinds of activity, interact with our kids, and bring donation from business community to support them and bring more resources, donations from, from business community, like, like, I super agree with, you know, our director, Chris, we're trying to working, you know, on ebooks, right? You know, we can do something for online library courses. Those are things, you know, we've been talking year and years, but now, like, you know, we see the pandemic separate us away, but more people, you know, rely on, like, you know, e-resources. But sometimes, you know, between that, we can, we can definitely find mutual benefits to bring them back to the books, to bring them back to the library, but also utilize the good resources from online side, and that the business community can bring more support from the technology side, also from the, from, you know, from the, the finance part, and those are the thing, you know, I believe my, my experience should continue to, my experience, my experience, past experience, and with my network should bring, you know, bring the benefits to our library.
Well, I certainly, again, I appreciate your, your interest, and I was happy to hear in the news that the Berigada Library has since been reopened after quite a number of years of being closed. I mean, I think we, you know, we're kind of moving away from the center of activity within the villages, and these are the kind of things that bring our people together. So I'm certainly happy to hear that and look forward to your continued work and your partnership, as you mentioned, with our, our private sector to bring further support to our library, because certainly from when we were young children, this was such an exciting place to be, and I think we want to continue to provide that opportunity for many generations ahead of us, even with the evolution of technology. That certainly can be a partnership with the library system here on Guam, and I look forward to seeing all of our libraries reopened and functioning for our community. So, Mr. Lee, thank you very much for your interest, and certainly you have my vote and your reconfirmation, and I look forward to hearing continued good news in the work that all of you are doing. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to provide a few questions to our nominee.
This is Mossi, Senator Brown. Senator Titikwe, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity, and Hafa Day, and Happy New Year to everyone who's here to testify. And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Lee, right?
Yes.
Wan Lee?
Correct.
The Nan Lee to say your last name or just Lee?
My last name is Lee, L.I.
Okay, Lee. Okay, so, Mr. Lee, thank you so much for stepping up to the plate. This is your second term, you mentioned. How long was your first term?
That was supposed to be for two years.
For two years, and how long did you serve of that two years? Was it?
Was, was, actually, was pretty quick for me for the two years, because, you know, most term I was like, was during the pandemic. So like, we're basically attending our meeting on regular basis through Zoom meeting. Yeah.
Online, understand.
Online, yeah.
So hopefully, you know, things will start clearing up, so you can do, you know, the work that I'm sure that, the reason why you're sitting in this position, to make a difference at the library, and hopefully things will pick up. In the meantime, this gives you the opportunity to work on, like, maybe the website, or the ability for people to seek information from the library online. And, you know, usually I always try and visit the websites for agencies and departments, and I'm trying to get on to the website, but unfortunately, I'm not able to do so. Is the website, well, maybe I could ask the director, but in, in your capacity as a board member, do you ever, you know, take notice of updates to the website? Information that's been provided on Facebook, maybe, you know, other avenues to reach to the public? And this, I think I'll ask Mr. Lee if, if he can, or Lee, I'm sorry. If you can answer that question into your capacity as a board member, what have you done to ensure those areas of reaching the community?
Thank you. Yes, thank you so much, Senator Telo. So basically, right, right now, we see, you know, we've been talking about year and years, even in the past, like, I want to say, you know, we trying to promote our, you know, e-resources through, through all kinds, all kinds, you know, network, like, website, and also we see now through social media, right? It also come to our concern, you know, like, how can we well to monitor social media and at the same time provide the safe resources to our kids and to our community? And that's, you know, we definitely, you know, certainly, I want to say, we based on very, very limited resources we have, but, you know, with funding, but we trying to do more based on the limited resource. We want to see what we can do in terms like, you know, promoting through our Labor Guam Library website, and as far as like through some kinds, you know, social media, and that's something, you know, we trying to move forward to see you possibly, you know, bring our community attention to that, but also, you know, come to our concern, we've been discussed about those through our board meeting is how we can, you know, to make sure we provide a security resources, which in terms of like, you know, we want to make sure we be able to monitor all the comments, the same time make sure all the resource, people may link the resource, Guam Library resource to some other resources. We want to make sure those are, you know, are on the safe ground, right? And definitely, you know, we've been, we've been talking about this, but, you know, in the long term, I think, you know, that's the direction we want to go, and then, you know, we'll work with our director closely and to see, you know, we make the, we make more things happen. Yeah.
Okay.
Senator, may I say something towards that? Add something towards that?
Director, if you don't mind, in just a minute, I will definitely get to you. I get to get, and ask you the same question as well, but, Mr. Lee, the other question I had for you, as a board member, do you approve the budget for the library? Is that in your, is that the capacity, the responsibility of the board?
Oh, the responsibility of the board, you know, I duly truly appreciate that I have a background in accounting. Definitely, you know, whenever we look into those budget balance, like, income statement balance sheet, like, any expenses, we are, you know, we carefully review those. We make sure, you know, whenever things and needs pass through, whenever any expenditure need to utilize, we make sure those are, we're very carefully to, we're very carefully monitor those things and to make sure all the resource we use in, in the best way, use the best tool, and in a legitimate way. Yes.
Okay, so then you do have to approve as a board member, the board members have to approve the budget.
Correct.
Right? Okay, that's very, and because of your background, Mr. Lee, I think it's such an asset to the library because of that background that you have, you know, and finding ways to assist the library in something I feel that's a little bit under budget, because there's so much you can do. Of course, if you have more money, you can do so much more, but it's thinking outside of the box, and I'm hoping that you can do that with the library. I mean, it's such an important agency, you know, it's, it's a beginning of the growth of our children to get them involved in reading, and I think you'll be a great asset in that, and I wish you the very, very best. And the last question I have for you is, Mr. Lee, does the board approve the, who will be hired as the director for the library?
Correct. Yes, we do, you know, we do enter during our, we do set a time, a board meeting to interview for the director, you know, that'll be, you know, it will be, but definitely it is a great impact, great impact for final decision that we choose selecting the director for the library. Yes.
And, and do you also decide on the salary for the director?
That's something, you know, that's something, dear, I want to say, just be honestly, you know, from the past couple of years, I, I want to say, you know, I haven't involved with this, just to be honest with you.
Okay, when was this director, when did the board approve this director? Mr. Sheringen or Chris? When did, when did you vote as a director? Mr. Lee?
Yes, so, Mr. Chris being with us, I want to say, almost for, almost for a year. So that was a year ago, yeah.
A year ago, he was. Okay, thank you again so much. I wish you the very, very best, you know, and if you, any questions you have for me, please feel free. My door is always open if I could be of any assistance. And welcome aboard, Mr. Director, and I want to give you the opportunity at this time to discuss the website, because I'm very concerned of providing that information to the public, especially in this pandemic. But nowadays, we're going to have to learn to live with this epidemic, you know, more than a pandemic now, and how it can improve. But like I said, I tried going on to the website, and I can't get on.
You know, first of all, I want to correct, I've been there only six months. I started here in June. I walked, it was my last day at John F. Kennedy High School, and the same day is also my first day at Guam Public Library System. So they had a farewell party at JFK, and then I came here as a welcome party, so the same day, within an hour or so.
My apology, I just enjoy the relationship with Mr. Chris exactly, you know, please forgive my, forgive my, you know, but the time goes really fast. I thought like, you know, we've been working with him for a year already, but definitely he's correct. My apology.
Okay.
Okay, as far as our website is concerned, I tell everybody, it's about, it looks like it's 100 years old, because it was created many, many years ago, and, and when the patrons was going to get some, looking for a title or book, they were not able to get it because the, because the fact that the particular software was not functioning as its design. And so, when we, when I came in, we, you know, the system, one of the, the biggest problem was the system. It was, we were paying like almost $27,000 a year, and then they just increased in $10,000, so $37,000. And therefore, I'm not complaining about the product, but they were, you know, they are located in New Zealand. And therefore, I'm not complaining about the product, but they were, you know, they are located in New Zealand. And the communication was very tough. And we have to communicate with only email. And our staff is not, I mean, they didn't train them very well. There was no training on a yearly basis. And we've been with them almost, almost 17 years. And when I saw that, and I, when I was at JFK, people used to call me and say, what's going on in the, you know, we are trying to find the title, it's not there. So I called the library at the time, there was a girl by the name of Terry. And Terry will say, yes, we have books, five books in the copies in the main library, two copies of each branch libraries, but it's, it cannot be retrieved. What is, so it has been there for a while. So when I came in three months, and I was, you know, we, and the contract was expiring in September, end of September. And it was a good timing. So we were prepared, we prepared for a new, new product. So we, you know, we got out of that system, we put a bid and they are also put a bid. They were, you know, all three companies. And we selected the company that was giving the best price and the best service. It was only $25,000 initial and $5,000 a year compared to $39,000 a year. And it's working very well, the public's very happy, happy with it. Our staff is very well trained on that. And if you, if you have a time, I mean, I will give you the OPAC, even though our, the website is not functioning, but we also have a creator, it's called OPAC. It's called Online Public Access Catalog. And if you click that, GuamTLS.Booksys.net. And that's where our patrons go there to look for titles. And, and this particular product is also integrated with our school library system. So when the student at home looking for a title, he goes to their own system. For an example, John F. Kennedy High School, they go to their OPAC and look for the title. And then if they don't find within the library and within the district, and they can go to Guam Public Library System where they can find the book, if they have. And then if they, if he lives closer to any of the branch libraries, he can go there and get the book. But because our library is open till 5:30, whereas the school libraries are, you know, closed at 2 o'clock or 2:30. So it's working very well. They, as far as going back to the website, it's not functioning. In fact, I send a note to the OTAC and see what's going on and they're looking into it. And when we, I, I think what happened when we, when we got out of that previous system, there may be some technical issues that, that such of the website. So they're working on it. So it's, it will be up and running only for temporarily because we got the money to get a new contract. And new code website contract, we'll be putting for prices, I mean, asking for price quotation. And then we should be able to launch the new website in about two months. And that will be excellent, excellent websites. So that's one of our goals. At the moment, we are giving the OPAC address there, GuamTLS.Booksys.net. And if you go there, you'll have all the information. That's where they go there and look for a book, not really in the website. Website will give all about our libraries, all the links and so forth.
Well, I greatly appreciate that in-depth explanation and of the, the system that you're on with OPAC. And I have visited that as well. But it's very important, I think, for the public to, to know what time they open, if the library is, you know, following rules, regulate, you know, and, and different areas too and locations. So I, I hope that you can expedite this website. Or I, I know it doesn't cost that much, or you could even put something online. If you can find someone who's real techie, you know, to put something up temporarily.
Yeah, no, we are very, we are actively involved in the social media. We are in Facebook, Instagram, Twitter and all of that. And then also, at the moment, I want to mention, I want to, I want to take this opportunity to pass the word around because we are sending, we launched a survey using Survey Monkey. And we said, you know, there are 64,000 members in our library. But most of the members are, they are not, they, when they registered, we didn't have the internet. We didn't have that, so they didn't have it, there's no email address. So out of the 64,000 members, we were able to get only 3,700 members with email address. So we sent 3,700 emails to get at least 400 results or feedback. So we have almost 200 now. So I would, anybody who's watching this, go to, go and check your email. And if it is not there, you may find it in the junk email. I'm sending it one more time, I'll be sending it two more times. Because the deadline is on the 15th of, 15th of December, I mean, January.
Have you, have you actually posted this in the newspaper, any kind of information?
I was, I, it's in the, it's in, today it was, it was the Guam Daily Post, it was there. Today, this morning, I announced in K57 Radio, now I am announcing, then I'll keep going to the media until the 15th. We need to get some kind of feedback. We need, see, one of the things, when they were looking and when they were discussing about this particular book this morning, they did not say a word about our public library. You know, we are capable, we will be capable of getting the title in five minutes. And we will be able to get it and post it on our website. So that, we are working on that direction. We got the grant for 110,000 for just ebook platform. So we are trying to get the price quotation from various vendors.
Okay, well, I appreciate you expediting this, it's very, time is, you know, for some people.
I'm, I know I'm going too fast and I'm also excited. There were a lot of things about happening in the library.
Absolutely, you know, I, I can hear your excitement and I greatly appreciate your due diligence and also doing your best to stay on top of it, especially in the media. I mean, just hearing that you've gone to radio, you've gone to print. I mean, that's a good sign that you're doing your due diligence. And I wish you the very, very best as well at the Guam Library. Thank you and thank you so much for answering my questions, Mr. Director, appreciate it. And nice meeting you.
Yeah, same here, same here, it's a pleasure meeting you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Senator Titigui. And thank you, Mr. Lee, for answering those questions for us today. I think we touched on a lot of good points, the ebooks, the website. I wanted to ask you if there has been any progress during your last term on the Bookmobile? I know that this was a project between many private businesses wishing to sponsor a Bookmobile and meeting the children in the villages. And is this something that's up and running now or can we expect it anytime soon?
Definitely, thank you, Senator Amanda. So basically, we do launch out the mobile bookstore in the community. You probably hear, you probably seen that happen during the past year or two years. It has been a lot, you know, a lot of upgrade, improvement for the mobile book. You see the change of the color, you see, you know, we put more resource into the mobile. Definitely, you know, it's in, it's in the progress. I want to, I want to say definitely, you know, I want to, you know, I also want, you know, add up from the director, she, our director, he's very, he's, he's the one, you know, make a lot of effort on it. Definitely, it will continue, right? Well, we definitely, for the, during, during the pandemic, you know, during the social distancing and the limited, you know, limited people in, 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 inside a room. So those are things, you know, we kind of like that really like drive us slow and really like pull us back. But definitely, you know, we're looking for a next, you know, a next year or next two years, you, you'll probably see a more appearance of, you know, our mobile bookstore in the community, definitely.
Thank you very much, I'm glad to hear that. I'm happy to see that the library system is, is adapting to the changes that we need to make due to the pandemic and just trying to be more resourceful and still provide all of the services that we all have enjoyed for many years to our community and continuing that service for our island. So Sis Massey and Mr. Lee, I look forward to supporting your appointment and moving you as expeditiously as possible in one of the upcoming sessions. So I want to thank you very much for your time. And Director Serengen, thank you very much for your time too. It's nice to meet you here and have a chance to discuss and have a little bit of an update about what the library system is doing. So thank you very much. We wish you all the best of luck as you slowly reopen for the public and thank you for your service. Thank you very much. With that, we will close the agenda item for the appointment of Non William Lee for Member Business Representative Board of Directors for the Guam Public Library System. Sis Massey will now move on to the second item, the appointment of Robert C. Titanow, Member for the Civil Service Commission. We have quite a few folks who are on the line today to testify. We have first with us, the Executive Director, Mr. Daniel Leon Guerrero. Will you be providing testimony today, Mr. Leon Guerrero? So you are on mute.
Yes, I would like to testify, but I'd just like the chairman to be the first one to, I mean, the Chairman of the Civil Service Commission, Mr. Calvo, to be the first one to testify.
Thank you very much. I was just going in order of the sign-in sheet, but yes, we will move to Chairman Mr. Wan Calvo. Thank you very much for being here today. Please state your name for the record, then you may begin. You are on mute, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, you don't have any audio coming in? If you can turn on your audio.
Okay. Do you hear me now?
I can hear you now, please.
Okay, so I apologize for that. Sometimes there's a glitch in the process, but anyway. Good afternoon to you, Honorable Madam Chef, and to also Honorable John Center Brown and Senator Gallow Tytovi, when I start this. My name is Wan K. Calvo, I'm the Chairman of the Civil Service Commission. And appearing before you in support of Commissioner, Reserve Commissioner, Robert C. Titanow. And I would also like to acknowledge the Governor and the Lieutenant Governor, Lola Mero, and Joshua Tenorio for appointing again Robert C. Titanow as the CSC Board. I'm appearing before you Senators for a reason. And here really support the confirmation of Robert Titanow. And that's the reason why. There's three reasons that I really want to touch on this hearing. One, public servant. Commissioner Titanow, if you recall, was confirmed by the legislature in June 2020 to fill the vacant that was vacated by one of our former CSC Board. But the term of that previous board member expired on September 2021. So we're now here today for Mr. Titanow confirmation. It's very honor to know that Mr. Titanow, Commissioner Titanow, is willing again to be a public servant. He couldn't just say, my term had expired in September 21, I'm done, I'm gone. But you know what, Senator? To be a member of the Civil Service Commission is very tasky, very complicated. But he reconsidered to continue to be a public servant. And that's my admiration to Commissioner Titanow. The second part, and the reason why, and his support, is the commitment to the commission. And the commitment also to be part of the hearing process for the employees and management. As you know, the past two years, we faced with a political crisis. We continue hearing cases through virtue of June. And Mr. Commissioner Titanow was able to participate throughout this time, despite of the pandemic. And you know, we're very, I'm scared, everybody's scared with this daily disease. But Mr. Titanow had committed himself to be part of the review, of the hearing process, to ensure the mayor's system and fair to the employees and management. And that's very, very honorable for Mr. Titanow to consider being a board member and to continue working with commission commissioners in hearing all these cases before us. And that's one thing that I really admire, and that's why I'm supporting him, is that it's very independent, analytical. He review all the cases that comes before us, before individual commissioner. We analyze those things. We hear the employees, we hear management, and we render our decision independently based on facts, evidence, many other documents that's essentially decision-making process. And having Mr. Commissioner Titanow taking an independent decision based on all those facts shows that he's very knowledgeable and ready to face whatever comes before the commissioners. And that's something that I noticed on Commissioner Titanow, Senators. He is the guardian of the mayor's system as well. He apply all the rules and regulations, the statute, policies of procedure, but he's making a decision independently. And I heard him through, throughout the deliberation process. And that's my admiration to Commissioner Titanow. He's on top of it. He's making a very sound decision, fair and balanced to the cases that we adjudicated or hearing. He asked, he asked a lot of question. And that's the beauty of asking management employees question to make sure that whatever information that comes before us is clear, concise, because we're going to make a decision based on the burden of proof. It could be a clear conviction, it could be substantial evidence, it could be others of the evidence. Those are critical for the commissioners to make a decision under the 4464 this year. Those are the three main reason why I'm here before you Senators, the support of Commissioner Titanow to be confirmed as Commissioner in closely. With the organic power vested upon you, Senators, I humbly ask you to confirm Commissioner Titanow so he can continue serving the public in fulfilling the mission, the mandate and the purpose of the Civil Service Commission. It's an asset of the member, and more so is fair and balanced in the letter of the law, personnel regulation, policies of procedures, that will benefit both management and employees. And that's why we're here as a permission, we're independent, we're fair. You got to make sure that the mayor's system is protected and preserved. I would like also to say, Sis Massey, for giving me the opportunity to testify to Commissioner Titanow confirmation before you, I am now open for any question on this matter, Sis Massey. Sajous Maasi.
Sajous Maasi, Mr. Calvo. I'd like to also mention that we have Mr. Roland Faharin, who is on the Zoom with us today, who is here in support of the nomination of Commissioner Robert C. Titanow. So he is here with us in support. Now we'll move on to Mr. Executive Director Dan Leon Guerrero. Please state your name for the record, sir.
Yes, my name, my name is Daniel Young-Garraw, the Executive Director of the Civil Service Commission. I thank you for this opportunity to testify in favor for the reappointment of Commissioner Robert C. Titanow. As you know, it's very difficult to find people that are willing to dedicate their time in the service as a Commissioner. It's a very, very difficult task. I've been looking for more people, but it's very difficult. And Mr. 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 Commissioner Titanow was actually thinking of just finishing his term and go on and and we asked him to, you know, if he can can stay back. And he thought about it and he said, yes, I'll continue serving the public. And I thank him because as of today, we only have five Commissioners, you know. We need a quorum of four and we only have five. So far, the Commissioners are so dedicated that we've been able to hold meetings without a lack of quorum. What I mean is that we were able to stay on schedule with them. Mr. Titanow actually discharges his duties in a judicious and impartial manner. He really prepares before the board hearing, reading and studying his documents. He listens, asks questions, deliberates, and votes in all cases he presided. He is honest and thoughtful in making his decisions. Commissioner Titanow would recuse himself from presiding over a pill matter where he feels he is conflicted. He can be depended on. He has attended over thirty board hearings. He's a strong advocate and believer of the merit system. He is fair to the parties, both the employees and management. I believe Commissioner Titanow will continue to work hard as a Commissioner on board hearing as the trial of facts determining witnesses' credibility and weigh evidence in making sound decisions. I endorse Commissioner Titanow's reappointment and confirmation and look forward to towards working with him should the Legislature confirm his appointment. Thank you very much for this opportunity. And likewise, I'm open for questions about Mr. Titanow. Thank you.
Sajous Maasi, Director Leon Guerrero. We do have Vice Chair John Smith, who also signed up to testify. I don't see him on the call right now, but I will make mention for the record that he did sign up. And now, if there is no one else here on the line who'd like to testify, we'll move on to the appointee, Mr. Robert Titanow. Please begin with stating your name, Mr. Titanow. And can I ask everyone else who is not testifying at this time to please mute your microphone? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, Hafdean. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the thirty-six Guam Legislature. My name is Robert C. Titanow. I'm honored to be reappointed by the Honorable Lou Leon-Garraw and Joshua Tenorio to the Civil Service Commission. I am humbled to be in your presence and to be considered to serve again. Our goal is to provide quality and efficient services in order to promote a healthy merit system. Okay? And our mission is to administer the merit system by entertaining appeals or complaints from classified employees and providing a fair and equitable venue for which the appeals or complaints can be advocated. I'll say a little history of the Civil Service Commission. That was that was initiated through the Organic Act under fourteen twenty-two, which states that legislatures shall establish a merit system. And as far as for appointments and promotions shall be made in accordance with such merit system. Okay, however, it was not until August seven, I'm going to call it short, just make it simple, short. In August seven, nineteen sixty-seven, that was the passage of Public Law nine dash eighty-six that the CSC was actually created. The creation was prompted by a letter from then-Governor Manuel F. El Guerero, which was submitted to the Guam Legislature to establish a CSC Commission separate from any operating department of the government in order to afford balance between the needs of the institutions and the rights of the employees. I would like to say thank you all for your time and support. Any questions can be can be asked. Thank you for your time.
Sajous Maasi, Mr. Titanow, thank you for continuing your service or answering this call to service. Once again, your willingness to remain as a member, as a Commissioner of the CSC. We thank you very much. I do have a question for you, Mr. Director. If you can confirm what you said earlier in your testimony that you've been unable to reach a quorum, but the the Commission continues to meet? How how is business being conducted?
I I misspoke on that. We've always been able to meet, to have a quorum. And I'm glad that we have enough. Although there's only five, we have always been able to meet a quorum.
Okay, okay, thank you for that.
We've been successful in conducting our meetings.
Very good, thank you very much. I'll now open up the the panel for questions. We'll begin with Senator Brown. Do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and certainly to Mr. Titanow and wanting to continue his his tenure service with the Civil Service Commission. I mean, if I were to listen to all this, I would think all is well. But you know, having worked in government thirty-plus years, I I don't have as optimistic a view in terms of how government operates with regards to the system because I still see to this day the abuse and misuse of the merit system and actually how people are hired and even how the the Commission itself seems to display. And I actually in my life had to attend a number of hearings involving employees, sometimes very slanted towards employees, which maybe for employees is a good thing. But I have a greater sense of view that we as in the government should have a greater responsibility to the people of Guam because I've seen such abuse on several terms of running, you know, agencies. And that's not the reality. It ain't all, it ain't all wonderful, it ain't all honorable, and it isn't all following the merit system. And sometimes we really have to question that merit system because even some decisions by the Commission itself have been contrary to actually upholding the merit system. I mean, sometimes the Commission itself looks as being quite political in how it makes decisions. So, you know, I wanted to ask you, Mr. Titanow, because at least in looking at your your background, you don't come from the government of Guam. What what do you see with regards to your responsibility and your capacity in serving the people of Guam? I mean, because these terms are six-year terms and they're fairly lengthy. What are you looking at with regards to what's brought before you? Because, boy, you know, I I can tell you a sad story and cry and tell you, gee, I'm sorry what I did, and I have a family to protect. And I've seen some of the decisions by some of the Commission members that I look at is really questionable. So I want to know your story in terms of why you want to serve and really what what do you look for? Are you really looking out for the public interest and ensuring that the merit system is followed? Because I'll tell you, to this day, till this moment in time, we see abuses, we see LTA's being hired and then in turn, you know, they get to the front of the line because they claim, oh, I've got experience in working in these agencies. We see political hires happening in classified service continuously. And then supposedly shroud themselves in the protection of a public interest that, oh, I I was hired by the merit system and therefore, you know, I'm to be protected in the merit system. And I've seen the Civil Service Commission quite a number of years make that more the focus and really ensuring that people, including all employees who should be Public Servant, really be held accountable for their actions because some of the actions of these employees are really egregious against the public. So I I like the honorable presentation, but I'm sorry, I have, I don't have any rose-colored glasses on at the moment when I look at some of the decisions that have come before the Commission. You and I have not, I've not had the opportunity to see you in action because, you know, you've come since my time in serving in my previous leadership capacity. So I get your take on that because a lot of people feel this way. A lot of people think it's a joke. A lot of people think that I, as staff, return them back and give them a promotion. And that's the sentiment a lot of people in our community have about the whole government merit system from the outside who are not part of the system. So I wanted to get your take on that and how do you think you can contribute differently or make it better so that there is public confidence in the Civil Service Commission decisions that are being made? Because it's costing people of Guam an awful lot of money. The decisions you make, some of the decisions made by the Commission that go through even when they're advised or not properly advised, have cost the people of Guam an awful lot of money and dragged out cases for many years because the Commission itself does not follow the law. And there have been rulings demonstrating that. So I know that's a big, long question, but perhaps you can hear my frustration in what I see really is while we talk about the merit system, I I see flagrant abuses of it in government. So I don't know if you see it differently or what what is your perspective? How do you contribute to that better?
I do see your point. And that's one of the many reasons why I'm here. I I came back to to make sure that there's a balance. There's a balance in the system. Yes, we have problems with the system, but we can also correct that. It is with technicalities also that we do have problems with. But we have to follow the law from Guam law to the federal law to to whatever law that is initiated and complies with with both parties, you know. I I'm here to make it a fair judgment and to follow the law exactly to the point.
Well, is there anything you've learned in your tenure? Because again, the Civil Service Commission has not always followed the law. I mean, there have been judicial rulings in the last few years that have shown how the Commission itself has not followed the law with regards to implementing standards under which, you know, decisions are to be made. It may not apply directly to you, but that is the reality. That's, you know, I I can't argue with judicial ruling. So it sounds good to say we're applying the law. But even in your your previous tenure, I mean, how do you think or what are you contributing to recommendations to improve the system so that the people of Guam actually feel that there is really a balance? Because right now, even the voting system, you have to have a decision of four. I mean, really, is that necessary or should it simply be by a majority? Because right now, the system is slanted. I mean, you have employees that again have committed egregious action, government, against our people. And you can say it's a technicality or whatever it is. I mean, maybe we need to look at the standards and whether or not we should allow the technicalities with the reasons why these individuals get returned back to their to their positions. Because in some cases, we are very, very good in this government at rewarding very, very bad behavior. So beyond saying we're following the law, because that's not always the case with the Commission. There are judicial rulings that counter that. So from your perspective, please, I don't, I don't want you to lean on the law or anything else. I'm asking for your direct judgment. In your background, because I appreciate the fact that you're not from the government of Guam. But what are you looking at in these, in this process, other than saying, well, I'm judge and jury? But what are you looking at that you you think you can contribute better or improve so that the the view of the Commission really can can be, you know, people can have confidence in the system?
Yes, in order to provide that confidence, man, is is to to establish a dialogue between the Legislature. Now it comes down to you guys to 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 change that law. And do that law is changed or whatever regulation is changed. It, we got to work together. We got to make it work. This island can be a showcase. And that's what I'm saying. It can be a showcase for for the population, for for whatever it is that you're mentioning. If people are leaving, this this whole situation is is not good. It's not good. And we, it comes down to the Legislature too. You know, we all have to work together. That's that's what I'm saying.
You know, I I appreciate that, that we can do legislation. But I'm asking you, you're the nominee before us that we're looking at perhaps reconfirming. I want to know from your perspective, what do you see that can be improved? Or what do you think you can directly contribute to the table so that there is some sense or, you know, improve the sense of confidence in civil service? Sure, I mean, there's probably a need for an overhaul. But as there is, I think with regards to the whole, you know, merit system process and hiring in the government of Guam, because there's a lot of abuse. There's a lot of abuse in the government of Guam with regards to hiring. So asking you as the nominee, I mean, what what do you think you you bring to the table that is going to help get that sense of confidence? What do you bring to the table?
Okay, what I bring to the table is honesty, man, and integrity, credibility back to the Civil Service Commission, if if so be it. In this case, I would have to have to comply. I would have to question also. And I would have to, I would like to bring to the table of honesty and integrity. I would like to bring it back. If this, if there is.
I I know that every case, perhaps, so obviously there are different circumstances involving every case. But when you go into look and evaluate a case, what what are you looking for? What is what is your ground? What ground are you standing on and what you look for?
I'm looking for integrity, credibility, honesty. That's what I'm looking at. And if I can provide that, that'd be great, that'd be great. Like I said, once again, this this place, this island can be a showcase. It's honesty, integrity, a balance. I I I know where you're coming from. I know there's a lot of abuses, but we are here to to oversee such matters also, you know. If if it if it was properly presented and within, you know, the statue and all that, there's a lot of technicalities to this. And there's a lot of when I read these documents, it's not just once, it's twice or three times. And and you have to be, you know, you have to have an open mind. Yes, there is abuse. It's not, it's not just with the Civil Service Commission. You may say the government of Guam, yes, I agree with everything. It's everywhere, it's everywhere. It's not just with government of Guam. It's 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 other governments also. It's not just here, it's back in the States also, you know.
Well, coming from your your background, working in in the military and in the federal system, and now certainly overseeing the the government of Guam system, what improvements or recommendations would you like to see? Because you do say there's a lot of technicalities because I I'm of a different opinion. I don't think we need to jump the mountain to address, you know, responsibility and irresponsibility of performance in the government. I wish there was a cleaner and maybe we need to look at a cleaner system that doesn't involve so much time and effort as if, you know, getting a government job is is a lifetime. You're guaranteed unless you're short of being put in jail, which literally what the system comes down to. And is that in the best interest of the people of Guam? Because that's my priority. I I am not of the position that the individual is more important than the public. I really am not. And and I think there needs to be greater accountability in the government, having firsthand experience. So with your experience in in the number of years that you've had and doing the work and coming from a different, from from a different perspective, not not coming from the government of Guam, what would, what recommendations would you have in, you know, in your service? What would you like to, having sat in, you know, a number of these hearings? What do you think we can do to improve that or what you would recommend?
First off, I would like to improve the the retainability of this Commission, you know. It's, first off, it's fifty dollars since nineteen sixty-seven. You know, when you join the military, another thing is the insurance. I mean, we are compromising ourselves, our time and our visual. You never know, there could be somebody out there that's being posted, that would be posted. And we, and that has happened. And what do, and if, and that has happened and 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 well, I was in the military, okay? If anything happened to me, there's insurances, insurance. If somebody zapped me, I'm gone, I'm done, over with, there's an insurance, you know. With being a commissioner, with being a commissioner, you don't have that. You don't have that. There's no insurance. What is it, my home insurance is going to take care of me? I was in the military. If it got shot again, you know, I would get a hundred thousand or what whatever it is. You know, that the federal government will pay for its members for the accountability. We talk about accountability. Now, accountability, if I can improve uh the 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 commission here is double up on the on the stipend. Enact a law that they they have insurance. That 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 way we can have sustainability, continuity with the with this department. We gotta start somewhere. That's all I'm saying. We have to start somewhere.
And beyond that, because you you and I probably have the same going rate as a senator. I I think I would just have about the same compensation and the same line of fire as you're talking about. But not to belabor this, because I I know the day day is going on here. But but are there other recommendations from decisions you've seen or made at the commission that you think in government or policy-wise needs to be addressed or you would like to see improved? Or what are your thoughts on that?
My thoughts on that, it's, I'm still getting my foot wet, to be honest with you. I'm still getting my my foot wet. To be involved with government and 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 the way it's been run, yes, there are flaws. There is there are flaws in the democratic system. There are flaws in everything, you know. And it's up to us. You has has this legislature and madam, excuse me, have that, you know, you can put into law, put into words and pass it through. Introduce that bill. Have it passed. Yes, we do have problems. Every every department has problems. And and with what's going on with this COVID situation, too, it's not putting it's not making it any easier. So we have to start somewhere.
Well, I I appreciate that, Mr. Titanow. And I hope that if you do think, yes, we can do legislation, we're well aware of that. But I wanted to get your perspective on having sat as a board member in the commission and sitting over cases, what recommendations you think could be done from your perspective to improve the system? So there is a greater degree of public accountability. The public could have confidence in the decisions that are being made by the commission. I think I'm going back to my original question. Is there anything more you want to add to that?
I I I hear you. The public confidence right now, even with the democracy, I mean, the the public confidence, even with the shots, you know. I mean, is it because, is it because the Vietnam War? Is it because we're losing confidence? The Vietnam War, we Westmoreland was saying that we were winning the war. Was is it because of the Iraq situation where weapons of mass destruction wasn't wasn't found? Was it the January sixth situation that caused all this, all these events? Was that the cause of public confidence being lacked in our system, you know, democracy? It it it's a big picture. It's a big picture, man.
I know, but I what I can focus on right now is a little picture of Guam and the Civil Service Commission in particular. But I I just wanted to clarify whether you had any key recommendations you would have to improve the system from your perspective. But if you don't, I I don't want to belabor it any further, Mr. Titanow. Thank you for at least responding to some of my questions. And with that, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to ask these questions of Mr. Titanow.
I I I would like, ma'am, establish a dialogue with 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 our with the organization here. That would be beneficial. Not just with one. I don't see it with just one, you know.
Well, there's nothing stopping that from happening. I mean, the island's not that big. I mean, I know we're going through this COVID situation. We're all a phone call away, right? Or at the end of a computer. I mean, it's not impossible to do that.
Uh, yes, yes, it's not impossible, but not not everybody can has internet, you know, and, you know, I mean.
Well, we're still here. I'm still here at work. I mean, anyone still come down and make an appointment with me and other senators. So it's possible. It's still possible. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Titanow. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Yes, of course. Thank you. Senator Titigui, do you have any questions?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, I'm I'm hoping that well, I'm trying not to sound too frustrated myself, you know, with the situation in the civil service. You talk, Mr. Titanow, about, you know, working with the legislature. But when you get, you know, the director coming down, you know, supporting legislation that actually gives a free lunch to somebody who's obviously not in the right, that that's an issue. So you talk about legislation and laws that need to be changed and to go through the to the legislatures to change those. Like I said, when you bring us laws that would actually benefit the employee who's obviously was not even supposed to be hired in the first place and to say after six months, you know, if he's not caught, then it's okay. You know, we can keep him on on the books. That's not the kind of legislation I'm looking for from the Civil Service Commission. And I hope, Mr. Titanow, I've 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 seen you in the public. I've said hi many times to you. You've always been very kind. A very nice guy, Air Force. That's my dad. You know how I be the Air Force, you know. So I I I know you have a very good disposition and a very nice personality to work with. And and I appreciate you wanting to serve in this capacity. I I very much do. You've been there for two years. And my question is, when did you exactly start the Civil Service Commission when you became a board member?
I believe I, it was June third of twenty twenty, ma'am.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And my expiration was September of twenty first, twenty twenty-one.
Oh, I, okay, I thought it was twenty first. Okay, I thought it was September twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-one, but you could be right. I I might have missed seeing the the because your your new term would have started September twenty-fifth, all the way up for six years. But I could be right, you know. Definitely, it's it's a position that you you need to get confirmed right away, given the lack of those who are going to who who is sitting there right now for the commission. But that being said, have you had the opportunity to attend an ethics course?
Ethics course? I think I may have. Yes, yes, I may have.
Okay, well, it's very important that, you know, the ethics course is taken. We we definitely don't want a commissioner to be sitting on this board that's a yes-man, you know, to a political yes-man. We want somebody who's going to make the right decisions, you know, for for the betterment of the people of Guam and fair and just, as well as honest. Honest. You want to be able to sleep at night, I'm sure, Mr. Titanow. You know, we all want to sleep well at night. And that is by making the right decisions. And not only on the ethics classes, but to the ethics classes also allows you to to or encourages you to also call out other people who are acting unethical. So if you see any of the other commissioners, you know, or even the director, you know, being unethical, I I hope, Mr. Titanow, you'll bring that to light. Because it's not only you being, like you said earlier, bringing integrity and honesty, that that's what you bring. While I hope you can also not turn a blind eye. And if you see other commissioners, it's just as important or staff over at the Civil Service Commission acting unethical, you need to bring that up. And I I'm gonna yeah, and I'm gonna trust that, Mr. Titanow. I know you, that that you will do that. I'm I'm praying you would.
Well, thank you for your confidence there.
Well, I'm so far you got my confidence, but if I hear something, you definitely will hear from me.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. I would like that.
Speaking my mind. I never have. But I do it with but I do it with all good intentions, all good. For your children, your grandchildren, for the people of Guam, everyone. It's it's about good intentions. And and too, I like to sleep at night, too. So that being said, Mr. Titan, do you think that you talked about the laws? In the event, how much interaction do you have with the Attorney General's office? At the end of a case where there's been an award or any back pay that's given? And are you familiar that any kind of back pay that's given to any awardee or funding that's given, that the Attorney General must sign off for that? Are you familiar with that?
Negative at this time. Usually, we have, we have our legal counsel. We go through our legal counsel and stuff and 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 we 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 make a determination of that, you know.
Okay, well, I think I think you need to look into that, Mr. Titanow.
Thank you. I will.
I think anybody that's being awarded from the government of Guam, using government funds, need need the Attorney General's signature in order to approve that payout. So I I hope as well, Mr. Titanow, that even though a case has been decided upon, that you'll continue to do your due diligence to make sure that you follow through with whatever the remedy is, that it's being followed. That's a big issue sometimes, you know. As a commission, you just say your two cents and then walk away. And all those things that were supposed to be followed are not even being watched or followed on. So I know you take pride in in what you do, Mr. Titanow, and I'm I'm hoping you take pride in what you do, that you will follow through with any kind of awardees or or anything like that. Mr. Titanow, were you part of the commission on the Port Seven?
Negative. I wasn't a part of that, ma'am, with the back pay and stuff. No, I wasn't a part of that. And yes, I am very concerned all these back pays and, you know, retroactive and, you know, all that good stuff. That has to be very, that has to be looked at in detail.
Well, Mr. Titanow, other than just feeling it and knowing it, I'm hoping you act upon it and do some research. You're in a capacity where, like you said, you're just getting your feet wet, your toes wet or, you know, and this is an opportunity for you to do more research on something that might have happened in the civil service before you you came aboard and maybe correct it before anything else has been, well, questionable. Or or even, so may I have you start with the OPA report that was just issued out by the the Office of Public Accountability? Please read the latest report that came out regarding the the Port Authority of Guam. It 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 provides a lot of insight and it could be very helpful in your position. And I, will you do that for me?
I'll do that. I'll do that for you.
I appreciate it. I
I'll do that.
Not only for me, but would you do that for the people of Guam? Because I tell you
Exactly, for the people of Guam.
Anything that you that this board or this commission decides to pay out on, that comes from hard-earned tax. From people like you, like me, and to everyone else who work very hard and pay our taxes. That's where it's going. And I'd rather stay going to paving our roads, taking care of our school, our healthcare. That's where
Basic services, ma'am.
Absolutely, Mr. Titanow. Basic services, absolutely.
Basic services.
So
We don't need to, excuse me, we don't need to have a a contact or anybody, you know, to have basic services. And that's provided, you know.
And that's why, Mr. Titanow, your decisions, when it comes to cases like this, are very, very important. Very important. So that being said, Mr. Titanow, I I greatly again appreciate and I I wish you the very best over at Civil Service. And I want you to know that my door is open. So if you want, if you have a particular law in mind that you think needs to be changed from the civil service, not to make your life easier, anybody's life easier, but to to fix something that that you feel is not right, unethical or unfair, then please come and see me. I'll be happy to sit down and talk with you and and look at legislation and invite my colleagues, too, to participate in this conversation. So please feel free to do that, that my door is always open. And again, I wish you the very best and Happy New Year to you and your family. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Titigui. With that, no further questions or testimonies today. The Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, Guam Build Up, Hagatnya Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications and Technology hereby concludes this portion of the hearing for the appointment of Robert C. Titanow to the CEC Board of Commissioners. I'd like to thank everyone for your time today. Mr. Titanow, I look forward to moving your confirmation in an upcoming session. I want to thank you again for your service and your time, as well as Chairman Calvo and Director Leon Guerrero. And to my colleagues, thank you for being here today for this public hearing. The committee will continue to accept testimony for both the appointment of Mr. Titanow and Mr. Lee to the Guam Public Library System Board of Directors for the next several days. And you can submit your written testimonies via email to senatorsmunia barns at guamlegislature.org or hand deliver it via the Dropbox here at the Guam Congress Building, one-six-three Chalantanto Papa Hagatnya Guam until close of business, Wednesday, January twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. This virtual public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you very much. And the time now is five twenty-six P M. Please be safe. Take care, everyone. Adios.
Thank you.
Thank you.